Okay. All right. Seven o'clock, calling the August 22, 2023 Bussaras Council Meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this country, and to the people with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
And Young.
Here.
All right. I'd like to take this time to introduce our new clerk, Miranda Wise. She's been doing very well, trying to learn the position, and I think she's gonna really do a good job for us, so I hope everybody can welcome her, and she's a good addition. So, all right, before you have... Before you, you have the minutes from the July 31, 2023 Regular Council Meeting. Does anybody have any additions or corrections?
Move to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, who is that? Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak.
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Bussaras. On August 10, 2023, an email from Sarah Hurley with the Crawford Partnership was sent to the downtown businesses and in part stated the following: "We wanted to let you know the City of Bussaras has assumed full responsibility for the Dora's day-to-day operations and overall management effective immediately. The Dora will remain in effect seven days per week from 11:00 a.m. until 11:00 p.m., and the boundaries will remain unchanged. The city team is actively securing and installing permanent signage as required to ensure a seamless experience for residents, visitors, and businesses alike. Cups will be ordered through the City of Bussaras and can be picked up at City Hall. We encourage you to visit the city's website at cityofbussarsoh.us for convenient access to online resources such as maps, frequently asked questions, and general information about the Dora." I have a few questions concerning the fact that the city is now taking over the operations of Dora. First off, who is on the city team?
Not me.
Bonnie, Madam President. Bonnie Welch will be the key person, and I will be helping her. I've worked a little bit on some of the things right now. Bonnie's gonna be the go-to person, since she's gonna be here long-term.
I have checked the city's website, and I cannot locate the Dora online resources. Can either you or Bonnie direct me where that is on the city's website?
I can't. I'm technically on it, so Bonnie, I could ask Bonnie to get in touch with you.
Okay, 'cause according to the letter from the partnership, they're telling you to go to that, and I can't find it.
Yeah, if there's one there, we'll make sure they're on there.
Number three, when will the permanent signage be secured and installed?
We're getting prices right now.
Excuse me?
We're getting prices right now.
And who is paying for the permanent signage?
We're working on a couple options. One we need, two is to get sponsorships for those. So, would any cost to the city?
Just some information. At the November 3, 22 Health and Safety Committee meeting, Councilperson Myers stated, or Chairperson Myers stated, "There's no taxpayer dollars being used to pay for Dora, and I don't know that legally any taxpayer money could be used for it." I've got friends that work through the different chambers in different cities that are doing this, and all the ones that I've talked to in my research, none of their communities are spending any money. It's all privately done. Also, at the November or December 20, 22 Dora public hearing, I questioned the amending of the Dora application to reflect any changes or corrections made to it. I also stated that when the City of Worthington amends their Dora application, a resolution is prepared setting forth the application changes identified as exhibits. The exhibits are attached to the resolution, and they create a paper trail. Chair Kevin Myers stated this is a phenomenal idea, thinks that would be a good, best practice for us going forward, and requested I provide him with a copy of the Worthington Resolution, which I did email to him that evening. Number five, page 10 of the Dora application, which was approved by council, states that the Bussaras area Chamber of Commerce will facilitate the purchase of and distribution of the Dora cups to the qualified permit-holding businesses. Will the permanent Dora application be revised to reflect the City of Bussaras is now assuming full responsibility for the Dora's day-to-day operations and overall management?
I'd like to refer that to Health and Safety.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I have a motion, and a second to refer the Dora application to Health and Safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Hi, I'm Greg White. I live at 1125 Hillcrest Drive. I would like to state that option two is not to best interest for the city of residents of Bussaras. The wastewater treatment plant was built in 1939. Right now, it's 84 years old. Only four times the plan has been updated, and the last time was in 2000. That's 23 years ago. What other problems exist with this structure? Do we have asbestos in there? Do we have lead paint? Has the structural engineer actually been called to actually look at that...
They went through that in...
There's no documentation of it.
Eighty-eight.
Okay. Well, eighty-eight, that's how many years ago? Was built on, and was built next to the old city dump. We can only guess what bad stuff was dumped there over the years. I know that the residents' sewer rates will only be raised 10% of their sewer rate, not of everything else. But you're banking on a 30-year note on an 84-year-old structure, down gradient in the rotor, okay? What happens in 10, 15, 20 years that the structure fails? The residents will be paying to buy and build a new one, and then continue to pay on the old note. Bussaras has a population, and I got all this from the U.S. Census Bureau, of the 2020 census, 11,512 people. We have been declining 0.5% annually since 2019. Total adults was 9,071. Of those, 3,638 are over the average of 55. Terry, I did find that information. Yes, Terry, you're right. The median household is $44,068. However, they did not put in parentheses that only 41.63% of those are adults that meet that criteria. The average earnings for the City of Bussaras, and this all comes from the U.S. Census 2020, is $34,344. Our poverty rate is at 18.21%, and unemployment is at 7.3%. So, as you can see, and other things that have come up, I understand the 10% on the rate, okay? I have no qualms about that. What I have qualm about is option two, okay? Option three would be a better in the long run, because all I hear the mayor is, "We want to expand housing. We want to expand businesses." How do you want a company to come in here and find out you've got an 84-year-old structure that you're just keep updating, okay, and not building new? That's my biggest thing, okay? They're not, they're gonna look at it and say, "You guys are nuts," and I believe that to be true also. You're nuts. But then also, the city's gonna have to look out for this, too. Mr. Myers stated in the last meeting that the city needs a new $600,000 back truck. The mayor has said that the Fire Department needs a new 386,000 new medic squad, a $500,000 new fire truck, a $1.5 million new ladder truck, plus, according to the auditor I got my information from, we are now $506,000 plus change in growing of the buyout of police and firefighters with their upcoming retirements. Where is that money coming from? Also, we now have a new federal lawsuit against the city. Where's that money gonna be coming from for paying attorney fees on that? Like I said, option three is better in the long run way for improving the overall growth of the city in the future. The city, the city needs to look at option three, okay? I know, talking to Mark, yeah, the EPAs, but I think if you went with option three, the cost difference, and according to what Terry told me, was $17 million, okay? That's peanuts when you're building a new facility. Seriously. Something you can build on that's gonna last 40, 50, 60 years, 84-year-old structure. I'll tell you what, first thing I would ask for is the structural engineer to go in there and say, "Yes, is there asbestos in there?" I bet you there is, because it was built in '39. I bet you there's lead paint in there, because it was built in '39. That's the only thing that was produced back then, was lead paint, okay? So, I'm looking at options. The other thing, too, is I would like to ask city council to find out who updates your websites. They're terrible, okay? You still have on the, on the water department, on the water treatment plant, you still have the drawing from the freaking thing that was on the picture of the handouts on the city website. You don't even have a picture of the nice new building out there. Plus, there's people on that list that, on some of the city websites, don't even work here anymore. So, I'm saying, I would like to see that the city websites get updated. I mean, find a school that these web designers are on, see if they'd volunteer to help you guys do that. But that's terrible when you're trying to look up stuff, and there's no information on there. Transparency, that's what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Do we have any communications and petitions? Seeing none. Standing committee reports, platting?
Nothing at this time.
Public lands and buildings?
Nothing at this time.
Health and safety?
No report.
Finance?
No report.
Economic development?
No report, Madam President.
Service?
No report.
Traffic commission?
Nothing at this time.
All right, moving on. Report to city officers. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. We closed the books on another fantastic Bratwurst Festival, this year's edition, which top-notch, just keeps getting better. Lot of people to thank. The opening ceremony was great. I mean, come through Sunday morning, and it's clean. There's just so many people that dig in and just do jobs and don't complain. It's a great showcase, obviously, for Bussaras. We don't, everyone was excited at the importance of this festival. It's our, it's our calling card, really. People come here, and it's the impression that they get of Bussaras is primarily what they may see in those three days, so... Tens of thousands of people come, and a lot of people, and I'm sure all of your family comes, like a lot of my own family is here. It's great homecoming. We've got, overstating the obvious, local businesses, fundraisers, 503Cs, churches, they require good crowds, good weather, and this is their major fundraiser of the year. Thanks to Mr. Froggy Kevin Myers there, who has the, I call it the post-Bratwurst Festival exhaustion virus. Is that right?
I don't know if it's a virus, but...
Something, whatever. A lot of people probably were sick, so we catch colds or whatever, just because they're exhausted. Festival board did a great job. Many volunteers, they're always got their head down working. And it's really cool to have the electricians honored this year. Those guys have great personalities, and they just have a lot of fun. And I want to make sure, I will not be here next year, some of you will. Please, I ask that council members are gonna be here. The effort that we put together, the partnership, I think has made that festival stronger. Let's look for ways, let's not try to pull a rug out from under them. Let's try to look for ways to make that partnership even stronger, find ways to do that. And also, congratulations over there to Erin, the queen, the mom, her daughter selected as the queen. She's gonna be doing a lot of traveling next year, a lot of miles on the car. Good luck with all that. And then finally, Kelly, Jeff, and I would like to welcome our new council clerk, as you already did, I'm sorry, Miranda, and we wish you the very best. Couple referrals. Tap fees to service and finance, we'll talk about that Thursday night. Do you want me to refer to join the ambulance, or do you want me to refer?
No.
Okay. Then I have one more. I would like to refer the safety service director wages, the way it's, the safety service director is chosen to be more in line with what other communities do. So, that would, I guess, finance, and what else? Would that be enough, Brian? Just finance?
Yeah.
I won't be ready to talk about that Thursday. I'm gonna get some figures together, so the first Thursday, first committee meeting of September, I'd like to talk about that. Thank you, Madam President. It's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. All right, so we have a referral for the tap fees to finance. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Spiegel, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have the service safety director wages.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Do we have a service director report?
No.
Okay. Mr. Gerner?
So, this just came sort of together last minute, but Todd Township's wanting to join the Crawford County West Joint Ambulance District, and so they had their meeting between the ambulance district, but pursuant to the contract with we have with the ambulance district to provide ambulance services to those townships, that would have to be approved by the city. So, we would need to refer that to the Health and Safety Committee and plausibly have a special meeting Thursday after the committee meeting to approve, if council so chose, to approve Todd Township to join the ambulance district, because they're trying to get in effective September 1st.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to refer that Health and Safety and request a special council meeting at the conclusion of Thursday's committee meetings.
I'll second that.
And you would also like to request a special meeting?
Special council meeting for the purpose of discussing the Crawford West Joint Ambulance District.
I will second the requesting of a special meeting and the referral to the Health and Safety.
Do we need a third?
Yeah, I'll third then.
Dan?
Anyway...
I do have a question, though.
So, you're saying that Todd Township wants to...
Join the ambulance district.
Which is what we operate, yes.
Correct.
Okay.
They're just not...
Who we contract to.
Right.
Our EMS provides that district with EMS coverage.
Oh, okay. So, we, okay, so that's where I'm confused, yeah. So, we, we just, we do cities, and then we're contracted, yeah.
Right.
So, we would be joining, so what is...
Immediately following...
I can't remember what that's called.
Yes.
What is that called? It's called...
Crawford West, sorry, Crawford, Joint Ambulance District.
Okay. All right. Got you now.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Ms. Sherrick for the referral. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And for the record, I have Mr. Myers, Ms. Sherrick, and Mr. Wireball requesting a special meeting for the purpose of the Joint Ambulance District, 7:00 p.m. or immediately following the committee meetings, whichever comes first. All right. Anything else?
The lawsuit against the Police Department has been turned over to our insurance company, so our insurance company handles. We pay the premiums, and they provide legal coverage on those cases, so we're not actually paying attorney's fees out of any of our funds. That's part of the policy.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Ms. Lewis?
You have received your council packets, the revenue comparisons and fund revenue comparisons for July 2023. The month of July was a good one for the city. Our overall income tax revenue was up 19%, and our safety forces fund is up 22%. We are getting to the period in the year where our funds and the budget are starting to run low, and we are seeing where we will end up short by year's end. Keep in mind, the previous auditor had to cut the budget significantly in certain areas to balance the budget for this year. To address this, I need to refer to Finance Committee appropriating $9,000 to lands and buildings outside engineering line, to Finance Committee appropriating $4,000 to the indigent burial line, to Finance Committee appropriating $5,000 for the civil service, for advertising and testing, to Health and Safety and Finance Committees, the purchase and appropriation for guns and materials for the Police Department. Also, a representative from Meter Investments stopped into my office recently while she was in the area. Her office had been taking a look at our accounts and recommended that we update our legislation regarding our investments, so I'd like to refer the updating of legislation relating to our investments. Thank you.
All right. Do you want to have us do those collectively or individually?
Uh, I think you can do them collectively.
I'll make a motion.
So, I have a motion by Mr. McKeever for... Lands and Buildings Outside Engineering Line to finance, Indigent Burial Line to finance, Civil Service for Advertising and Testing to finance, Purchase and Appropriations of Guns and Materials for the Police Department to finance, and Health and Safety, and Investments to finance. I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, a second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, you also have the statement from the treasurer. I have a motion to accept and file.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Potter, a second by Mr. Spiegel. All those in...
Mr. Young.
Mr. Young has a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have nothing from the police chief, and we have the Fire Department summary report. May I motion, have a motion to accept and file?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to accept the city officers' reports as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak on the standing and special committees and city officer reports.
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. In response to the mayor's written report for tonight, appearing on documents on demand concerning the Bratwurst Festival, which states in part, "I hope that city council will resist efforts to break the partnership that we have enhanced during our administration, but instead look for ways to make our partnership even stronger." I remind council that Resolution Number 218-2021 was passed May 18, 2021, authorizing and directing the service safety director in behalf of the City of Bussaras, Ohio, to enter into a permanent agreement with the Bussaras Festival or with the Bratwurst Festival Inc. to provide necessary safety forces and cleaning services at no charge for the Bratwurst Festival, and to give the festival a one-year advanced notice of change to the agreement. Since June 8, 2023 and after, I have made both verbal and written public records requests for a copy of the signed permanent agreement. I have been informed by both the administration and interim law director that they cannot locate a signed copy. At the July 5 council meeting, Councilperson Myers and Director of the Bratwurst Festival said he would inquire of the Bratwurst Festival Board if they have a signed copy. To date, I have not heard back from Mr. Myers.
Nobody is able to locate anything at this time, but we're still gonna try to look.
Thank you.
And I wasn't here right then, but I think what it appears has happened is that legislation, basically in the minds of people around the Bratwurst Festival and the city, basically said that the agreement that we have with them is now becomes permanent, and we have to give them a one-year. There's no agreement. That's just the agreement with the legislation backing up that now it's a permanent agreement with a one-year provision. There's not a formal new agreement that was just adopted. I think that was the parties intended or tried to accomplish.
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're right, 'cause I remember, I think Steve was pushing that pipe right there.
The legislation states that it authorizes and directs the service safety director to enter into a permanent agreement. If you will look at past agreements that were entered into by the city and by the Bratwurst Festival when the city was making a charge for cleaning and safety forces, that agreement was signed by both the city and by the Bratwurst Festival. So, the fact that we prepared agreements before that we, that legislation authorized to enter into, this is the same that this legislation is doing, is authorizing to enter into. So, there needs to be a written agreement signed by both.
I think that would have been the best-case scenario. In 2018, I was not here. I'm not sure who the wall director was at that point, Rob or Matt, I'm not sure. But that would have been the best-case scenario, but it appears from my reading that what they attempted to do was adopt whatever the agreement that was existing in 18 on a perpetual basis, and if we were going to amend or alter that agreement moving forward, we would have to give the Bratwurst Festival a one-year notice. That's the best we can do. I don't know. I wasn't here in 2018. I think you probably prepared that legislation in the agreement, correct?
I retired February 22, 2016, so no, I did not prepare that piece of legislation.
That's close. I don't know. That's, going through the file that we have on the Bratwurst Festival, that's, that's the best that you can put it back together from five years ago, that they attempted and thought that they were adopting.
Should we try to use corrective and write up an agreement, so we have something on file?
Sure.
I think that sounds like probably the best idea is, because it, yeah, it sounds like we've got a missing piece of paper that needs to be created. I mean, and we can, you know, because of when it was passed, we can always, you know, as of such-and-such a date, this went into effect, but that way we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is.
Right.
So, are you making a motion to refer this...
I will make a motion to refer this to, is it...
Who's it gonna be?
Service? Was that who we did it through? Finance? Yeah, Health and Safety, maybe? 'Cause it doesn't use money. Who, Vicki, who's the ones that passed it through?
I, I'll be honest, I do have attached to my statement here a copy of the Resolution 218-2021, so...
I think it was Health and Safety.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, so I would refer both to Health and Safety and Service.
Yeah, our friend to Health and Safety, so we can get it taken care of?
Yes, Service.
And Service.
I mean, we could talk, we could talk about that, but would it be just as well to like make it part of the annual Health and Safety, or closing the streets and all that? Well, every year, then we give them, but we can talk about that Thursday.
Rather than making a permanent agreement, do what was always done before, have it addressed each year.
When we close the streets and, you know, just part of that, just a thought. You guys handle that.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick to refer the Bratwurst Festival agreement to Health and Safety and Service. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Young. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, consideration of legislation for the first time.
Proposed ordinance 31-2023, it was referred to Health and Safety. Amending ordinance 25-2000 in the traffic control map and file established by sections 305.01, 305.02, and 305.03 of the codified ordinance of the City of Bussaras, Ohio... of the codified ordinance of the city of Bussaras, Ohio to henceforth slash remove the no parking on the south side of Clinton Street for the entire length. And then I have proposed resolution 223-2023 referred to public lands and building wastewater treatment plan. It's authorizing and directing the mayor and the public service safety director on behalf of the city of Bussaras, Ohio to proceed with Arcadis US, Inc., 7575 Huntington Park Drive, Suite 130 Columbus, Ohio 43235 for implementation of the pre-construction tests necessary for option two as presented by Arcadis US, Inc. for renovations to the Bussaras wastewater treatment plant not to exceed $54,600,000.
I accept these as the first readings.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKeever, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak on legislation read for the first time.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I could request that in Resolution 223-2023, where it mentions the option two, to have the presentation from Arcadis included as an attachment so that people know what option two is. Also, it jumps from section one to section three, so to have section three updated to section two, please.
So I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. McKeever for amending to have the presentation of option two attached from Arcadis and to correct the typo of section one, three to one, two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Sorry.
No, that's fine. In addition to Mr. Myers' corrections, I also have some for Resolution Number 223-2023 concerning the wastewater treatment plant. Page one, the second whereas clause, line two, we need to change insure, I-N-S-U-R-E, which means to protect against loss, damage or injury, to insure, E-N-S-U-R-E, which means make certain that something will occur. Also on page one, the fifth whereas clause, line three states $54 million, that number should be $54,600,000.
Okay, so the numeral part is wrong.
The numeral part is wrong. Line three. Then also on page one, under section one, line one, we have a small P for Public Service Safety Director. And while we're making these other corrections, that should be a capital P for his title, Public Service Safety. And Mr. Myers already called that section three should read section two, which I also had called.
Is that it for your list?
Pardon?
Is that it for your list?
For Resolution 223.
I would like to amend my motion to make those changes to also include insure with an E, $54,600,000 in capital P.
I'll second that.
Mark, did you say your second? Okay. So I have a motion by Mr. Myers amending the changes, a second by Mr. McKeever, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Then ordinance number 31-2023 concerning the traffic control map. Third line, we need to remove the backslash behind the word henceforth. And then the sixth line, since this is an ordinance, we need to remove the word resolved and replace with ordained. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion to amend.
I'll make a motion to amend the ordinance number 31-2023 by getting rid of the backslash in the third line and putting ordained in in place of resolved.
I'll show it now.
I have a motion by Ms., I'm sorry, a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Spiegel, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Right, White, 11125 Hillcrest Drive. That information you put with there, could you please enlarge it so people do not have to use magnifying glasses to read the numbers? That's pitiful on there, especially for people that can't, you know, see very well or anything like that. I ask that it be redone and professionally done because there are, that one thing you have to get a magnifying glass out to read the three options. If you want another page number, I'll show it to you later.
Oh, you're talking about the?
Yeah, the Arcadis stuff. You can't read it.
I got you, I was like, I didn't know.
No, no, that's fine, it's Arcadis stuff. That's why I said, Mr. Myers, he said about the information being put about it. They just be enlarged for people to read, so they can clearly understand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, consideration of legislation read for the last time.
Proposed Resolution 221-2023 splash pad agreement referred to public lands and building. Authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director on behalf of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with the Bussaras Kiwanis Club to allocate the responsibilities of each party as it pertains to the splash pad installed at Ball Miller Park.
All right.
I make a motion to accept.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Wireball, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for visitors to speak on legislation read for the final time.
My name is Eric White, 11125 Hillcrest Drive. I have, and no one has been able to answer my question. It states in one, the Bussaras Kiwanis Club shall solely be responsible during the terms of this agreement to provide for and be financially responsible for the care and maintenance for the splash pad, including but not limited to repairs, replacement, upkeep, maintenance and any other things incidental to maintaining a properly working splash pad. Now, my understanding is the city of Bussaras does not own the splash pad, correct?
I asked that question earlier about insuring it and I was told it's already been added to our insurance and we actually have ownership of it.
We have ownership, they.
And even though we didn't, no taxpayers might, we own it, but they're maintaining.
That's what I was told, yes, sir.
How does that happen?
A gift.
Agreements.
A gift.
It was a gift to the community.
That's why I wanted to know, because we took it last time.
Anybody else? All right, referring back to the originating committee. Proposed ordinance 31-2023 traffic control map referred back to Health and Safety. Proposed Resolution 221-2023 splash pad agreement referred back to public lands and buildings. And proposed Resolution 223-2023 wastewater treatment plan referred back to public lands and buildings. Committee reports on pending legislation, Health and Safety?
Health and Safety is favorable to proposed ordinance 31-2023 as amended.
Public lands and buildings?
Public lands and buildings is favorable to proposed Resolution 21-2023 splash pad agreement. And public lands and buildings is favorable to proposed Resolution 223-2023, or, yeah. Wastewater treatment plan as amended.
Further consideration of pending legislation, Resolution 221-2023 splash pad agreement. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, a second by Mr. McKeever. And we do a roll call, so you do. You do Sherrick first, then McKeever, and then Myers, and then go down the line that way.
So do I start with?
You start with Sherrick.
Sherrick.
Yes.
McKeever.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Wireball.
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Resolution 221-2023 is duly adopted. All right, any old and unfinished business?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to request a special meeting this Thursday during committee meetings of the ad hoc committee to approve minutes of previous sessions.
I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Ms. Sherrick for a special ad hoc committee meeting. Do you want it immediately after the special council, or do you want to do it before?
Whenever you see fit.
Who do you just follow?
I'm sorry?
We already said that the special council meeting was going to be immediately following, so let's say it's immediately following the special council meeting.
All right, so a special meeting is being called for, for the ad hoc committee for the hiring of clerk. I have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Ms. Sherrick for it to immediately follow the special council meeting on Thursday. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And you're both available that evening.
All right, do we have any old or unfinished business? All right, the only thing that we have is I would like to ask that each of the committee chairs bring up their actual open projects list and get it cleaned up for the next council, so there's not a bunch of mud that they have to go through. So if we start working on that, it'd be appreciated.
Can we get a printout of that one?
Yes. I'm sorry?
Of all, the whole list.
Email all of us the entire list.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you have any, any other older unfinished? Does anybody have any newer miscellaneous? The only thing that I have is that the packets, if you want a physical packet, will be in your mailbox from now on before the meeting. So just stop in the clerk's office to pick it up. We have no absent.
Do you want to list the people who actually want packets, hopefully you don't have to worry about that many?
You can provide that to her, that's fine.
I want one.
All right, so we have several referrals. We have lands and buildings outside engineering line to finance, indigent burials line to finance, civil service for advertising and testing to finance, purchase and appropriations of guns and materials for the police department to finance and health and safety, investments to finance, tap fees to finance, Crawford County Joint Ambulance District to Health and Safety, DORA application to Health and Safety, Safety Service Director wages to finance and the Bratwurst Festival Agreement to Health and Safety and Service. Are there any other referrals?
Is DORA Health and Safety and Service?
DORA?
Just the one.
Just Health and Safety? Do we want it in Service too?
I think Health and Safety.
Does anybody else have any referrals?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Mr. McKeever, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at 7:43.
3.